The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, February 12th is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sayak?
Here.
Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Vice Chair Birch?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
First of all, let me state that this is my first meeting as chair, and I'm going to count on our able staff and my fellow commissioners. If I skip anything, someone's either going to send me a note or this way, so if you see any of that happening, you know it's only because I've skipped a procedure. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of our democracy, and is essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business to hear from as many citizens of our town as possible. There are several ways for members of the public to address the issues that are of interest to them. One is to submit written comments to the staff, and those are always included in our packets and reviewed by us prior to the meeting. At the meetings, there are two different ways for the public to address the commission and participate in the democratic process. One is through verbal communications, and that is when an individual can speak on any topic of interest to him, not on the agenda. The second way that the public can participate is by speaking on an agenda item. And if you wish to address the commission tonight, I ask that you fill out one of these cards with your name and address. It's on the back of the benches where you're seated, and bring it to the staff. For anyone who does want to speak tonight, I would ask that when you come to the podium, you please pull the microphone towards you so that you can speak directly into it. And we do have a limit of three minutes for those participating in the process of speaking. Do I have...I want to move right on to the approval of minutes. We have minutes for December 11th, 2013, and January 8th, 2014. They were distributed in the packet for the commission. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Yes, Commissioner Sayak?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to call attention that I was not present at the January 8th meeting. However, I have watched the notes and can vote on the accuracy of the minutes. So with that, I go ahead and make a motion to approve December 11 and January 8 as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Erickson? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. All approving?
Aye.
Are there any requested continuances this evening, Mr. Paulson?
No.
No. All right. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission also serve on several town committees. Are there any reports from any of the commissioners on meetings since our last meeting? No? Thank you. Okay, we now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting, when members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue that is not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. Mr. Paulson?
I'd just like to correct for the record. I misspoke. There is a desk item for item number three that is on the dais, and there are copies available out on the table in the lobby.
All right, thank you. Have all the commissioners had an opportunity to read the desk item? All right, thank you. All right, so let me call John Shepperson. Mr. Shepperson, again, speak directly into the microphone or take it with you if you have something that you are going to show us. Remember, you have three minutes to speak, and at the 30-second mark, the yellow button will come on, and at the red, the time limit is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Shepperson, 1200 Grim. I'm a little nervous, as always.
What I...
Please take the microphone with you if you're going to step away from it. Thank you.
What I want to publicly tonight indicate through this form to the town is that the Citizens Group is making a public offer to the developer on the Albright project, and the public offer is that the citizens will drop our lawsuits. And in return, we're asking that the developer follow the town council's approval. That has been already rendered, and that we are asking that they not attempt to follow the terms that they're seeking in the ballot measure. So that's my first point I wish to make. And now, a short PowerPoint. We're asking the community to save our town, and I'm asking you, as leaders, to save our town from what I suggest is a hostile takeover in terms of the ballot measure and the way in which they seek to change how that project is...the oversight by the town in that project. This is basic language off the town's website in terms of the sovereign entity that exists. We have a council, manager, form of government, and it's the town council. We have elected officials. The town manager is not elected, and the community development director is not elected. The ballot measure calls for the community development director to be the primary administrator of the specific plan. And I can think, at least on one occasion, when I heard Commissioner O'Donnell say, "Well, this is a decision that I think that an elected official should make," and asked that the town council address that. And what we have here is the reverse. We have taking away, as I understand the ballot measure, the power of the elected officials to exercise oversight, and we're putting it in a single individual that's not elected. And this is more language from the ballot measure that indicates the discretion that exists in the community development director. And with my seven seconds, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepperson. Mr. O'Donnell, you have a question?
I'm just wondering if you've communicated your offer of settlement to the developer.
I have to be very careful what I say. This is the first communication of this offer.
I asked the question, because nothing is ever simple, and I was just hoping that you would...what I take to be your latest offer, had put it in writing so it would be clear, so the developer wouldn't have any way of not understanding it. So if you have not done that, I merely call to your attention it might be a good idea.
I appreciate this suggestion.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Shepperson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we're now going to move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, and before the commission acts on the consent calendar, any person wishing to have the consent item discussed may request that the Planning Commission remove it from the consent calendar, and it will be heard under the new public hearing section of the agenda. Is there such a request? Seeing no request. Before the commission acts on the item...on the consent item, are there any disclosures from any commissioners on this item? Commissioner Sayak?
Yes, I will have to recuse myself on this as I live 500 feet from the subject.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't...
And I would also like to disclose that I am also in the same position, so I will be recusing myself from any vote this evening. However, we commissioners will be able to sit at the dais for the vote. And I would like to now turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Birch, who I told she would not have to worry about chairing a meeting because I didn't anticipate missing any meetings, but I didn't anticipate this either. So this will be her first act as chairing the meeting as well. So Vice Chair Birch, please act as the chair on the matter and request the motion.
Nothing like trial under fire. Seeing as nobody wanted to pull the item from the consent calendar, is there a motion to accept this item on the consent calendar? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes, I would move that we accept the report, based on the report in the staff that the Fusion School has been operating under the conditions of approval without complaint, and that Fusion School continues to serve a special niche in our community where many of our local students are enrolled.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second? All second. Great. All in favor? Aye. Unopposed? All right. Did you...oh, aye. Yeah, me. Sorry. Trenanmous.
All right, so then I'm going to resume as chair. We'll now move into the public portion of our agenda, and we're going to consider Agenda Item Two, which is an application for a conditional use permit, U 13023. It's requesting approval to operate a tasting room on property zone C2, APN number 52904043, and the address is 346 North Santa Cruz Avenue. And Mr. Paulson, I understand you're going to give the report tonight.
Yes, Ms. Savage was unable to be here tonight. She's the project planner. However, staff has nothing to add to the report, but we are here to answer any questions should the commission have any.
Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Badami?
In reading this project, I'm kind of curious about the wine tasting room. If we allow a CUP for a wine tasting room, would the applicant be able to sell and serve beer as well, or is it just strictly a wine tasting room?
As currently proposed, it's a wine tasting room. The applicant may be able to offer more information. They're specifically a winery, so the letter of justification that goes with this project, we don't anticipate any beer being tasted at this location. Should they need to do that, this is going to be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the council. If you would like to, in your motion, whatever that motion may be, in your recommendation, add that specificity so that should, in the future, some other winery who also may brew beer want to do something, they would be required to do a modification of the use permit.
Okay, I have another question for you. In granting a CUP, what code enforcement measures do we currently have in place to make sure we have compliance and address any violations?
That specific topic is...has and continues to be discussed by the town council. That matter will be going back to the town council, I believe, at their next meeting for further discussion to come to a conclusion on that. The town has contracted code enforcement officers currently. We do not have a town staff member who is a code enforcement officer as in previous years, and the town generally works on a complaint basis. We are not a proactive enforcement community right now. All of that is, again, subject to change as the town council discusses the CUP complaint process.
Okay, I have one more question for you. You mentioned that the proposal does not fall into the definition of a bar due to no hard liquor being served or mixed drinks, and that it would not be open past 12:00 a.m. So when I read the definition of a bar in the town code section 29.10.020, it defines a bar as a drinking place where alcoholic beverages and snacks are served. So wine's an alcoholic beverage, snacks are prepackaged food. So is this a wine bar, or is it considered a wine tasting room?
This is considered a tasting room. The town does have other wine bars in town where you come in. It's not a tasting opportunity. You come in and order wine. You may have small plates or other food with that, but it is specifically approved as a wine establishment from that perspective. As the council continues to discuss revised alcoholic beverage policy, which is tied with the entertainment policy, should the commission think that there's more clarity or possibly a definition for this type of use, because this is a unique use from staff's perspective, would you not consider it a bar? So that may be something that you may offer in your recommendation as well for council to consider.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
Could you clarify how you came about with the required parking spaces for this space?
The staff member that reviewed this, Ms. Savage, talked to our building official, and we looked at building code because they're not proposing any seats. Typically, we look at a bar or a restaurant based on seats. So they looked at the minimum requirements for what would typically be a bench or a seat, and so that coupled with the length of the proposed serving...bar serving area is where that was arrived at.
So it's only going to be based on the linear footage of the bar? It's not really based on the square footage of the overall building, whereas there could be people standing behind others at the bar. We're not taking that into account.
It is not. Same with any CUP. There's an occupancy for the space, which I believe this one's 659 square feet or so. And then there's our parking regulations, which are not based currently on occupancy.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Paulson, I have a question myself. I know that you mentioned that there were going to be new policies considered by the council next week, or perhaps it wasn't next week, but my question to you is, in the conditions of approval, have we taken into consideration the fact that something might change based on the deliberations of the town council?
So to clarify your first...next week will be the...or not the next week, it's the next meeting, I believe. It's not the next meeting, it's the meeting after that. The CUP complaint process is going to be discussed. In Exhibit Three, there is condition number eight, which states, "The applicant shall be subject to comply with any new requirement in the town's alcoholic beverage policy within six months from the date of change in policy." So we are covered in that arena.
Within six months?
Of the adoption of that new policy.
All right. So they have to comply within six months after it goes into effect?
Assuming anything needs to change. We don't know that that's the case, but should something need to change, then they would have to comply within six months.
So it would relate back to whatever the changes are then, the conditions of approval?
It would relate...this specific application would have to comply with the new alcoholic beverage policy, whatever is adopted.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I understand the six months. Does the six months run from the granting of the CUP to this applicant?
The six months would be from the adoption of any new alcoholic beverage policy by the town council.
So if that were two years from now, there'd be no vested right?
No, their vested right is what the council, as part of your...when you make a recommendation, they'll take an action. Should they approve this application, then it would run under the current alcoholic beverage policy. Should six months, two years, 10 years down the road, the council change the alcoholic beverage policy, this applicant, along with, I believe, there's another...there's a few other ones that have come through recently when this started being discussed, have the same condition. And so six months after the adoption of this new policy, anything that relates specifically to this conditional use permit or any other one would have to be modified to comply with that alcoholic beverage policy.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I thank you. At this time, then, I would like to call the applicant, Mr. Ottinger. If you could step forward, please. And I'm not sure I pronounced that correctly, so please, please give us your name and your address. Thank you.
Sure. So my name is Matt Ottinger, and you're forgiven, I've spent a lifetime correcting that pronunciation. My address is 7137 Redwood Retreat Road, Gilroy, California. And I filled a card out basically preemptively to see if anybody did have any...wanted any more clarification from our point of view versus the report itself. So I'm really available and open for questions. I would add the caveat, I know that it may not have much standing or bearing to the acceptance of this or the recommendation for this application, but I am a native Los Gadien. For many years, graduated from Los Gatos High School, so I just wanted to make the point also that the building itself is owned by my family and has been since the '50s, I believe, so it's not a carpet-bagging type scenario. So anyways, if there's any questions, I might answer or clarify for you. I'm happy to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Stay right there, all right?
Sure, no problem.
All right, okay. Repronounce your name for me so I really get it right.
No problem. Ottinger.
Ottinger, okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Erickson?
So, Mr. Ottinger, thanks very much for your application. I appreciate very much that what I believe you're proposing to do is introduce a unique use in the town that has some...so it's not something that could presently exist in the downtown, and it's unique in the town, so I would applaud the addition to it as we struggle, as we go forward in the future with trying to be sure we have the right mix of kind of retail, commercial establishments in the downtown. That said, I have a question for you. So in your letter of justification, you talk about subletting the space to a second winery. Are you...so I wasn't clear exactly what you were...
Sure.
Because you were talking about then the same staff would serve the winery. So are you literally subletting the space, or are you just letting another winery also...
Sure, sure.
...join in the tasting room?
Right, right. So to address that point, there actually would be, for point of practicality, there would be two wineries operating within the same tasting room, operated by the same staff. So it's not a subletting thing as much as it is a shared space thing. This also goes to the...and that was a question that Ms. Savage raised earlier preemptively was, okay, well, if there's two of them, would there ever be three or four? And the reality is, is what the ABC, the state liquor laws for our type of liquor license, you are not allowed to do more than two in any one space, irrelevant of the square footage.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Sayak?
I'm going to try to try your last name, Ottinger.
There you go.
There you go. Okay, following the same line of questioning, but the application is your application, so should something go wrong, I'm not assuming, but should something go wrong with your sublet, enforcement issues would fall with you, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. And do you...so is it just your two wineries that will be there? You will just be selling your wine as well as the other wine and no other wines?
That is correct.
And no beer from...
No beer. There's no intention of serving or selling beer.
Okay. And you also say in your letter that up till now, you've had no problems?
That is correct.
And that's...what location is that? That's...
That's at the actual production facility, which is at the end of Redwood Retreat Road in the Santa Cruz Mountains, just outside of Gilroy.
And you'll continue to operate a tasting room there as well?
Yes, that'll probably be more seasonal, might be for special events, that sort of thing, whereas this location would become our primary focus.
Okay. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Yes, anyone else? I have a question for you. Well, go ahead, Commissioner Birch. My question is about the food items. If you could elaborate on that. I know you indicated it was prepackaged food items, but can you give us some idea of what your plan is?
Sure. So basically, as I understand it, and obviously I haven't gone through the process yet because there's not a place to do the process with at this point, pending approval, is there is a food license you can have for selling food where you're actually not preparing the food yourself, so there's no cutting boards, there's no knives. It's basically a refrigerator that would have olives, cheese, precut, prepackaged salamis, that sort of thing. So more charcuterie-style food items, crackers, that sort of thing. Nothing that would be served by our staff to people, opened and served, that's not part of the process.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner...Commissioner Erickson?
So can I ask you a follow-up question about that? So the food itself will all be takeout, not to be consumed on the premises?
That is...I was basically going to go with what the recommendation were or what the constraints were. It would...nothing would be able to be served by any of our staff members. If somebody would like to purchase something and consume it while standing at the bar, that's up for...and also, it would probably be controlled by the actual food license as well, whether that's permissible on premises or not. And if the fact of the matter is that it's not, then it would just be for sale to go.
Presumably, it depends on what sort of license you apply for.
Right, right.
Commissioner Sayak?
One last question. Because, and I'm sure this has been explained to you by staff, the CUP runs with the land and not with the applicant.
Yes.
And so one of the things that we like to do is to tighten up the CUP so that should you decide later to move or something happen so that you would vacate the property, it's not an open-ended license for someone else to come in. So that being said, you mentioned that you will only pour wine and not beer nor hard liquor. Do you have any objection to us putting that specifically into your CUP?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If you have any additional comments you've thought of as we've questioned you, please feel free to give them. I have no other cards for anyone else to speak, so you can summarize again what it is you want to do and...
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and present and discuss the project. And basically, we are looking to bring a different style of business into town, one that there have been before, however, or not currently, and also as well to promote more foot traffic to that end of North Santa Cruz that's perhaps a little less densely populated as the other side of North Santa Cruz. So we really appreciate your time and hope for a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. We will now close the public portion of the public hearing and ask any commissioners if they have further questions of staff, want to comment on the application, or want to introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner Birch?
I want to clarify with staff on the application. Hold on, wait. I just want to clarify, on the actual application for this CUP, does it discuss them subletting a space? And we've had this come before and this before, so I want to be clear on what the application says.
It does not explicitly say that in the conditions of approval regarding the subletting. So it's...I don't know that it's subletting in the normal sense of...
In the way we would think of it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, the one other point getting to some of the questions that were raised in re-reviewing the conditions, the condition number four in Exhibit Three, the use, the approved use is a wine tasting room with retail sales, so anything outside of that would require a modification, whether that's beer or other alcohol.
Any further questions? Any commissioner like to make either a motion or make further comments? Yes?
Thank you. The applicant mentioned that he's concerned about the lack of foot traffic at that end of town, and what I noticed about that end of North Santa Cruz Ave is that you have an intensification of alcohol and food-related establishments at that end of North Santa Cruz Ave. In fact, if you look at the first six consecutive businesses, five of those are food and/or alcohol occupancies, and then you have another eight within 300 feet. So you're not getting a lot of foot traffic because I don't see a mix down there, you know, the retail bringing in more foot traffic. And collectively, you know, walking around within a 10-minute walking radius, I did count another 34 establishments that serve alcohol for a grand total of 47. So I'm kind of concerned about the intensification of another alcohol-serving establishment, especially at this end of town.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'm going to move that we recommend the approval of the conditional use permit to the town council, and that we find that... to the town council, and that we find that the proposed project is categorized as exempt under section fifteen-three-oh-one. Thank you. By section four B of the redevelopment plan for the central Los Gattis redevelopment project, that meets the use set forth in the town's general plan, which is also, uh, referenced in exhibit two. Uh, we recommend approval to the town council of the condition of use permit, which is U thirteen dash oh-two-three, with the conditions contained in exhibit three.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Seac?
Um, before I second, I wanted to make, uh, I wanted to ask the maker of the motion if I could make a modification to CUP number four, um, where it says that approved use is a wine tasting room with retail sales, and just specify that more, so that it would be the approved use is a wine tasting room with no more than two wineries, not selling beer or hard liquor.
Fine.
Okay, I'll second the motion. And if I may, just make a quick comment to that, um, with regard to the, um, the intensification, um, which I did think about. One of the things that appealed to me with this application is because it was, it was converting it from personal service to retail, which is something that, it doesn't seem that happens. It's always retail to personal service. And so, for that reason, I, I do believe that that would be more of a beneficial thing, that would help to bring more traffic than of a customer service. So, just wanted to acknowledge that, um, that consideration was, was brought in.
And, uh, Commissioner Erickson?
So I would just like to make part of the record, an observation and a request of the staff. The staff is working with the council on the revised alcohol beverage policy for the town. It's already been before this body with a recommendation going forward. It seems to me that a wine tasting room is a different use that has a convention, we have, for which there's a conventional understanding for, and in the draft, unless it's changed since it, since it left us, there is not a definition of a wine tasting room currently in the alcohol beverage policy, so I think that it would be advisable to, for the council and the staff to consider, including in the alcohol beverage policy, a definition of a wine tasting room.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Commissioner Talisfor.
Right. Um, I came in not wondering about the intensification of the alcohol and everything. I think I'm, I will support the motion based on the fact that condition number four has been improved to, um, included, or tightened up, so that we will not, it will have to come back if it goes outside of, um, being used as a wine tasting room. And then I'm also comfortable now, knowing that, um, anything that the council approves, when they're, uh, makes their decisions about the definition of wine bar and wine tasting room will be, uh, retroactive. So that's made me comfortable, and I think I can support this for that reason. The only other thing I wanted to say was that the, um, the service that was in there before, the spa, actually did have retail to sell. They had things in there that people did buy, so, and I consider this somewhat the same, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just have a question of staff. Um, I may be wrong, but I thought when the ABC grants a license for a tasting, um, facility, they have their own rules, what a tasting means, uh, such as, well, defining it. We don't seem to have it, as has been pointed out. Um, but certainly, I'm understanding that tasting is unlike a wine bar, where you can essentially drink as much wine as you're able, uh, whereas wine tasting is, is different. So I'm really asking a question. Is there any definition in the Alcohol and Beverage Control Act, or in its administration, as to what a wine tasting facility is?
Yeah, there are specific parameters for wine tasting room. Um, and I think they're generally limited to these four one-ounce pours. And then you could also, if you have those four one-ounce pours, you could have one glass of wine, but that's our understanding as to the limitation. Um, we will definitely tighten that down and have that information for council as this moves forward.
I just wanted to say, with, with respect to Commissioner Bonami, the reason I, I was sensitive to her question, but I felt because of the definition in the ABC, she should be comfortable too, it's not like a regular bar. So that's what gave me comfort.
Right, I have a question for staff, and that is condition number ten, certificate of use and occupancy. I might understand, just wanted to be clear on this, it's limited to ten patrentes in the, in the, uh, wine tasting room?
No, that is not correct.
That is not correct, okay.
Certificate of use and occupancy is done for every business in town. The occupancy of the business is regulated by the building code.
Okay, so that, but it will be, um, posted in the, in the tasting room, or no?
Ten will not be posted in the tasting room. I'm sure the occupancy of that space is more than ten.
More than ten, okay. That was, ten was just for the parking?
Correct.
All right, seeing no further comments or questions, I'd like to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Commissioner Bonami is opposing. Thank you. Appeal rights of the actions of the commission?
There are not appeal rights in this case. Excuse me, this is a recommendation to council.
And it will go forward. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering architecture and site application S thirteen zero-eight-nine, requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence and to construct a new residence with reduced setbacks and a detached garage with a reduced side setback at one-six-four-two-eight Englewood Avenue, on property zoned R-one-twenty, APA number, APN number five-three-two-zero-five-zero-one-nine. And, um, Ms. Avila, you're going to give the, uh, Avila, you're going to give the report?
Uh, I just have, uh, one thing to, uh, correct in the staff report. Uh, the requested setback for the residence is twelve feet on the first floor, and the staff report indicates that the second floor was fifteen feet. It's actually fourteen feet on one side and fourteen and a half on the other, so it is also, uh, a slight decrease in, or, or request for an exception to the setback on the second floor.
Thank you. And if, um, I just need to have a show of hands as to how many commissioners have visited the property, and are there any disclosures from commission members? No, thank you. All right, please proceed with the report then.
Okay, the property is on the east side of Englewood Avenue, and this property was annexed by the town earlier, or late last year, I think it was October when we completed the annexation. Um, the neighborhood is primarily in the town. Some of the properties are still in the county, and I attached a map. Your location map actually shows what's in, what's not. Uh, this area is slated to be entirely within the town at some point. Uh, we annex properties when we have the ability to do so, and that's usually when there's a development proposal of some sort, so, uh, even though the town has the ability to annex the entire neighborhood, we typically don't do so unless there's a development proposal, uh, and the property's either contiguous or within three hundred feet of a town-maintained roadway, which pretty much everything in this area between Kennedy and Shannon Road fits into that niche, and so we, we typically annex lot by lot. So this particular annexation meant, we have the entire side of that street on Englewood within the R-one-twenty zone now. There's still a few properties on the opposite side that are, uh, out, outside and in the county, and will hopefully be annexed in at some point, 'cause it's a kind of inefficient way to provide services, but, uh, so this was a great infill for us to pick up, because it was the last lot on that side of the street, filled it all in. Um, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing residence and to, to construct a new residence. The detached garage up in the front is proposed to be five feet off the property line. That is fairly common for an accessory structure. Um, we have a couple of other examples on the street that I cited in the staff report. The, uh, neighbors on both sides have fairly large accessory structures. Theirs happen to both be in the rear yard. I did not include accessory structure square footage in the floor area numbers. I was strictly citing house square footage. So, uh, the house to the left, when facing the property, is actually, does have about forty-one-hundred square feet on the site, when you count their structure in the back and the house, and I'm not counting the garage, I'm just strictly looking at floor area that would, would be applied to house FAR. So in the report, I believe, I said it was around three thousand, and that is the house size, but there's a large accessory structure behind it, which is included when you look at the FAR for the property. The applicant has presented, uh, a couple of exhibits. I'm gonna pass them out to the commission when the applicant speaks, uh, that shows a lot more information on the house sizes. There, it's very scattered throughout the neighborhood. There's a wide range of house sizes, from fairly small, under, under two thousand square feet, um, up to, you know, four thousand, forty-five hundred square feet, as has been proposed on this particular lot. The houses in the immediate neighborhood are all smaller than this one, and that is why staff didn't recommend approval of the project, because it was a square footage concern. The primary reason for locating the house where it is on the property, rather than pulling it forward, you know, typically we'll try to align a setback more with what's already out there with other structures. In this case, there's a significant, pretty significant oak tree on this property that is being worked around. Right now, it's behind the house, but if the applicant went to add on to the rear of that house, that would mean that tree would go. Potentially, if it went, the house was expanded, it would be pretty tough to save that tree. So they chose to put the house completely behind the oak, meeting the setbacks that were recommended by the consulting arborist. And what that does is it pushes that massing away from the frontage of the lot, back further on the property, which will help reduce some of that apparent massing from the front. Uh, staff is available if you have any questions. I just wanted to give you more, I do have details on house sizes and where they sit within the neighborhood. Um, all the analysis in the staff report on house size and is, is, was really confined to the R-one-twenty portion of Englewood. I didn't do anything in the R-one-eight zones, 'cause clearly those would have higher FARs. So I tried to look at like-for-like lots, uh, in the information that was provided in the staff report. Uh, I also have a second exhibit from the applicant that we'll give to you when the applicant speaks, that shows reduced setbacks that are already existing in the neighborhood. They're trying to demonstrate the compatibility with the setbacks they're proposing. So there are quite a few non-conforming setbacks within the stretch of Englewood Avenue that's in the R-one-twenty zone. So we'll provide both of these when the architect speaks on the project.
Are there any questions of staff at this time? Yes, Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. Um, January thirteenth letter from Larry Cannon, two thousand and fourteen. There's two images, elevations that show the house, and this oak tree you're speaking of, am I, there is a picture of a tree in front of the house. It's on the last page of his letter.
Are, are you talking about the computer models that the, on the back page of the report?
Yep.
Yeah, those were generated by the project architect.
Okay.
And so they tried to put the trees in as, in terms of the accuracy for, for the-
So the oak tree you were speaking about is, I should assume that it is the one that's pictured here?
Yes, it's the large tree that you see in front of the, uh, house.
Okay. Um, and then I had one other question. Um, they're asking for a demolition, and I wanted to know, was the structural report ever issued or?
They did not prepare a structural report. They're making the argument based on, uh, just design-based, that they, the house can't structurally support a second story, and that they couldn't add on to it easily, uh, the where it's sitting on the property with the trees and, uh, and/or if they, where they added on to the house, if you punch too many holes in it and break up the continuity and take away too many of your exterior walls, we're gonna call it a demolition. It's what we call a technical demolition. If you take away more than fifty percent of the exterior walls and/or break up the continuity and don't have at least fifty percent of your walls contiguous, that is considered a demolition. So we would look at it the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Bonami?
You mentioned that there's five homes on Englewood that are larger than four thousand square feet?
Correct.
Uh, that are not in the immediate neighborhood. Um, can you be more specific? Are they just over four thousand? Are they closer to the five thousand? Because this particular, uh, project, um, with the square footage and the eight-hundred-and-eleven square feet garage, you're looking at five thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet. So, just so that I can kind of picture it in my mind, those five other homes, which end of the spectrum between the four and the five thousand?
The house on the adjacent property, when you count the house in the square, in the accessory structure, that's about forty-two-hundred square feet. Um, if you go three lots down from this, which is just on the edge of the, what we define as the immediate neighborhood, that particular house is forty-three-eighty-four. The house adjacent to that is forty-two-oh-four. Two lots further down, uh, it's forty-six-fifty-two. And there's one additional house on the opposite side of the street, uh, that is forty-four-thirty-two. Um, this exhibit that I'll be passing out to the commission shows exactly where they're located, and they're the ones shown in this kind of pink color.
Okay.
Uh, these are all color-coded by, by size ranges, so I think that'll help you in seeing where they are in relation to the project site.
Thank you.
And we can also put it up on the screen, so the audience can see it.
Thank you. Um, I have one other question for you. Um, and that the properties in the neighborhood with the non-conforming setbacks, were those approved by the county or by the town of Los Gattis?
Uh, they're a mix. Uh, I'd have to, you know, without going and pulling building permit records, I can't tell you which ones we're counting, which ones are town. Uh, as I said, all the properties on the side of the street that the applicant's property is located on are in the town, and a number of those have been approved by the town. Uh, some of them are older construction, and, uh, I, you know, without checking building permits and details, I can't tell you where they were, if they were constructed in, in the town or in the county in some, except for the ones that I'm aware of, because I worked on the project. So I worked on three other houses on this particular side of the street in the past. Uh, those three were approved by the town. Um, one of them has a ten-foot side setback and a fourteen on the other. One has twelve feet, and the, the two on either side have non-conforming setbacks, but I don't know when they were constructed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Erickson?
So thanks for the report, Ms. Avila. I have a couple of questions to be sure that I'm understanding everything. So the, the, the footprint of the breezeway and the square footage of that wouldn't, is not included in either the square footage of the home or the garage? Is that correct?
Correct. Because the breezeway is more than fifty percent open, it is not floor area.
Right.
It simply counts as impervious coverage.
Yeah, just, that was, and then, if you look at sheet A three with me for a moment. So the, the applicant is requesting, if I understand correctly, a twelve-foot setback for the, the residence.
For the first floor.
For this, for the first floor, yeah, first floor. And a five-foot setback for the, setback for the garage, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the section of the home where the breezeway is adjacent to, if the, if the drawings are to scale, generally, is that, so it's, with the breezeway, the structure itself is a foot further closer to the property line than the remainder of the house? And then there's a mechanical closet that is also adjacent, and I believe that's three feet in depth. So, is the twelve-foot setback from, what point is the twelve-foot setback from?
It's from the wall of the house and also the structural support, the structural elements for the breezeway. Those are also at twelve feet. There is a little bit of a roof overhang. Uh, so we measure, we would measure the setback to support columns or wall elements. Uh, the, the eve does extend a little behind. You can see on the breezeway on the site plan, which is sheet A two, you'll see a little dash line, um, and that's where the support elements are that come down to the ground. Those are twelve feet, in line with that proposed setback on the wall of the house. It's at the closest point. That little, uh, the little, um, enclosure for the, on the side, that your little closet you referred to, um, I think it's that little, the little bump out that shows on the site plan, and that is a little bit closer, you are correct. Then, that is a little closer than twelve feet.
So it, okay, so then what you're telling me is, is drawing, sheet A three is wrong, because in sheet A three, it appears that the structural elements of the breezeway are actually one foot further, one foot-
Oh, it's not shown on the site plan, I'm sorry. It's not on the site plan. The little, the little, the little utility closet's not shown on the site plan.
Right. So, it appears in Sheet A3. It is probably a question I'll ask. Let me hold the question to ask the applicant for clarification.
Any further questions of staff? If not, I'm now going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to speak. Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Gary Colsette, Architect, with you on University Avenue, Suite L, in Los Catos. Thank you, Ms. Avila, for explaining things. And I will get to Commissioner Erickson's questions in a moment. First of all, I just wanted to explain a few things of our process. And the ultimate goal was to create a family-style house in Los Catos, a six-bedroom house on a large lot that this house would fit within the neighborhood and have a great yard, front yard and backyard. And those houses tend to be 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, that type of a large family house. That was our goal, that we were looking for properties that would support this type of a residence. And one of the best streets in town is Englewood. And there's several reasons for that. One of them is there's several large lots on Englewood. It's old county land. And there are also several large houses on Englewood. So, we felt that this was going to be a good fit. There are several two-story houses up and down the street. And I understand that the immediate neighborhood is more limited than that. But if you broaden your horizons for a second, when we're coming up and down these streets, we're seeing these houses that are looking fairly large, but not overly large. They just look like they fit on these large properties. So, we found this great lot on Englewood, had this gorgeous oak tree. It's got a huge drip line. And immediately, we knew that that was going to be an obstacle, but something that we wanted to work with, because it's such a great prized tree. So, that was part of the reason why we decided to put the house behind the tree, because it really wasn't feasible to put the house in front of the tree. The existing house, right now, has been there for a long time, but it's grown up, the tree has grown up with the house. And any arborist would tell you, if we took that house down, we would start to damage that tree and cause pretty good harm to that tree. So, we know that. And we have tried to keep everything out of the drip line, except for some walkways and the essentials. That's another reason why we put the garage in the front. We don't want to have a bunch of cars driving over the drip line and getting to the back or even pushing the house even farther back. So, the decision was to go with the detached garage. And when we located our detached garage, when we used the 15-foot side setbacks, the house, the garage is totally dominating the house, major impact on the project. So, we looked at the width of the lot, which is one of the other drawbacks of these lots. They're 80 feet wide. Most of the lots on this street are 80 feet wide. The code for an R-120 lot, minimum width is 100 feet. So, these lots cannot be created here today. And one of the things that goes with an R-120 lot is a 15-foot required side setback. If you do the math, that's 15% of the width of the lot. What we're asking for is a 15-foot side setback, a 15%, excuse me, side setback, which equals 12 feet. When we compare other zones, R-18 has a 11%, excuse me, R-18 has a 13% side setback. And R-110 has a 12.5% side setback, which are even more lenient than this 15% on an R-120 at 15 feet and a 15%. If you look at it as a percentage basis. So, that was one of our reasons for not arbitrarily choosing 12. We add some logic to it. We also canvassed the neighborhood. We canvassed the street. There are several properties on this street that have reduced setbacks. Some of them are the result of it being county, although the county has the same setback requirements in this zone. So, I'm not sure how these houses got approved. There are a few houses that, like this house right here, is a brand-new house and has 12-foot setbacks. This house right here has a minimum setback on the northern side. And if you look at this graphic, this is our immediate neighborhood, but just adjacent to that, on either side, are large two-story homes. And then, there are several more that go down the street. So, we just think that this house was, we really did a research on this house. We felt that this was going to be a really good fit. And we kept the house underneath the FAR. And we also focused the house on the front and the back. So, there's no focus on the sides. And especially, the second story is brought in, very minimal windows looking down onto the sides. Everything is focused to the back and to the front. And when this house's setback over 100 feet from the street, this house is going to appear smaller than the houses up and down the street, which are at the 30-foot front setback line.
Mr. Colsette, yes, your time is up. But let's see if there are any questions for you. Commissioner Talisfor.
Thank you. Yes, one of my first questions, and I always ask this of applicants, what was the outreach that you conducted in the neighborhood as far as showing plans, talking to neighbors? And the reason I'm asking is that I'm referring to the desk item that we received tonight. Have you seen that?
I have seen that. I saw that yesterday.
Okay. So, can you help me out with that?
The owner is with me here, and he would be better able to address those. He's spoken to several of the neighbors. I don't know exactly when and where and how many, but I'd rather have him address you on those.
Okay. I think that's all for now.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Colsette. It's always nice to see you here. So, I followed your logic about the 15% setbacks. So, my questions earlier, so, let's assume that that's reasonable logic. What I was concerned about, it appears that both the breezeway... So, it depends on then whether I'm considering the breezeway part of the garage. Because it appears to me that the structural elements for the breezeway are 11 feet, have 11-foot setback, and that the mechanical closet has a 9-foot setback. If my, if my, if my scale was, the scale I use to measure your drawings is the same as your scale. So, my question is, should I think about the breezeway in relationship to the requested 5-foot setback? But part of the breezeway is on the house, so you're not really using a 12-foot setback. You're using an 11-foot setback for part of the house, a 9-foot setback for part of the house, and a 12-foot setback for part of the house, is my sense. Is that...
I think it's pretty close. If I, my take on it is, and I agree, and I wanted to clarify what Suzanne had said. The breezeway elements are 11 feet. Indeed, they are 11 feet from the side property line. So, that is still another reduced setback for the breezeway from the detached garage to the house. And it does connect to the house. And so, that's, but we consider that open on multiple sides. So, that's, we consider that as the breezeway or a side porch. The closet is for mechanical purposes only. It's not livable. It has reduced height. And we felt that that was something that we have had approved many times in the past on side setbacks, just out of necessity.
Continue.
I have a follow-up question for you. So, the 5-foot setback for the garage, what's adjacent to it next door is a home. So, I'm placing a garage close to, with a reduced setback adjacent to a home. And the rationale in the staff report was that it's an accessory building. And while the town code doesn't limit accessory buildings to the rear of a property, by implication, it does, because it talks about reducing rear setbacks and side setbacks for accessory buildings. It doesn't make any reference to reducing front setbacks for accessory buildings. So, that says to me, it presumes that they would, that when I'm thinking about an accessory building with a reduced setback, it would be on the rear of the property, which means that when I use that reduced setback, it's likely that it wouldn't be adjacent to the next-door neighbor's residence. In this case, you've put the accessory building, in this case, the garage, adjacent to the residence next door with a reduced setback, which seems to me has the potential of having greater impact on the next-door neighbor than if, in fact, it were an accessory building on the back with a reduced setback, which wouldn't be, would have a higher degree of probability that it wouldn't be adjacent to the primary living space of the neighbor next door. So, you understand my question? Can you help me understand about that?
Yes. And again, why we're asking for that reduced setback is so the garage doesn't dominate the front of this house. It also has to do with access coming into the garage. We could move it to an 8-foot setback and still gain access. But after that, we're kind of, we have to take out another tree, and we'd have to circle around into the garage. It'd be more difficult to pull in and out of that. And so, it really was kind of, we're almost, I won't say forced our hands, because no one's forcing us to do this. It was just, we thought that it was a great solution for that. Now, speaking from the neighbor's perspective, there are several examples around town where you have accessory structures in the rear yard, next to other accessory structures in the rear yard. And they might both be pool cabanas or where you do a lot of entertaining and have a lot of noise and everything. This is a garage, you know, there's no windows on that wall. It's well insulated. So, and really, the lights of the car will not be shining into these people's houses or anything like that. And so, we felt that it was a minimal intrusion on their privacy.
Thank you, that's a fair answer.
Yes, Commissioner Birch.
We're sitting here taking a look at the shadow study on A12, if you would reference that. In reviewing that, there definitely is a significant impact on your neighbor, shown on the December 21st study. And your neighbor has obviously written in concern about that and the privacy. In looking at your floor plan, it appears on the second floor, you have an extremely large game room set in between Bedroom 4 and Bedroom 5. I'm curious if you and the owner have talked at all about some modifications on the second-story layout, perhaps making that game room smaller and bringing the bedrooms in a little tighter. That would reduce the mass on that side, probably provide a little extra privacy and a little less shadowing. Have you talked to him about that at all?
We discussed that a little bit. But we kept coming back to the reality that there's several large trees on the property line that are really shading their yard more than this house will ever shade. And so, we never showed trees on these shadow studies. But the reality is that there's trees that are always affecting the shadows.
Well, it's not just the shadow study, though. It's also looking at the privacy. When I walked the site and I walked the backyard and I peeked over the fence to see kind of, you know, how that was going to work, the house, because it's setback, and I agree it's a difficult lot, it does wind up looming over each side neighbor's backyards. So, I was just curious if, rather than creating this one vertical wall on these sides, if, you know, in the sake of compromise and working with your neighbors, if there could be some conversation on perhaps bringing those in and maybe creating a little bit more privacy for the neighbors?
Sure. We did actually, just to clarify, the secondary does setback in. There's no vertical walls on the sides.
Right.
Okay. And also, this house has only one living room downstairs and one family room upstairs. So, it's not like we're asking for an excessive amount of living spaces, in our opinion and in the market's opinion. Yes, it is a large space. It could be reduced if that's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay.
We certainly would entertain those kind of things, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I just have a question for you myself, Mr. Colsette. On A1, I just want to re-clarify that in the back of the garage, there's also a large tree. Is that the neighbor's tree? Or is that, I realize this is just a sketch, but you do show a large tree behind the garage?
I don't know if that is an existing tree or not.
Okay. All right, I didn't go any further back in it to look.
Oh, yes, okay. I've just been, there are two, there's a, if you look at A2...
Okay.
And you look adjacent to our proposed garage, there's a 20, it says, I don't know if you can read that, but I'm trying. It says a black locust. I don't know what size it is, but it says a black locust. And then, there's also one adjacent to where we're putting our house, where the side door is to our house, next to the breezeway. There's a 22-inch live oak there. And that's the tree that we were trying to emulate in this rendering.
All right. I just wanted to clarify in my own mind whose property that tree was on. So, I think we can agree it's probably the neighbor's property.
It is.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. Mr. Colsette, if you have a seat, then we're going to call you back after we hear from members of the public. We're now going to invite comments from members of the public. And if you haven't already turned in your speaker card, please do so. And at this time, we would like to call Michael Eckhart. Mr. Eckhart, please come forward and, for the record, state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Michael Eckhart. I live at 16414 Englewood, on the house to the left. If you're on the street looking at the house that's to be built. My wife Susan is here as well. We've been residents for nine years at that location in Los Catos.
Do you have some comments that you wish to make tonight?
I do. Just want to double-check. Do I have three minutes or six minutes on...
You have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light shows, it will mean you're down to 30 seconds.
Got it, okay, great. So, I sent an email out yesterday with some details about the concerns we have. We're good neighbors. We don't try to cause, you know, a lot of trouble on anything with buildings or anything else. But we were a little concerned, not having known what the plans were for the structure next to our house. And first, a couple corrections, or may I offer some corrections to the report? One is, I think the statement was made that the house to the left of the building in question, or the building property, is 4,100 square feet or 4,200 square feet. That is not correct, unless I live in a bigger house than I thought I did. It's actually 3,100 square feet is the house. And then, the house in the back is another 450 square feet, totaling about 3,500 square feet, not 41 or 42. So, one of our concerns is that the house that's going to be built next to us is about 50, I'm sorry what the number was, 5,700 or 5,800 square feet, including garage. And ours, if you add everything together, is 3,500. So, it's quite a bit of difference. The other comment I would make is that, in the report, it said that we are a two-story house next door. We're a one-story house, so we're lower down. And I'm concerned about the privacy that Commissioner Birch was talking about on that. So, I sent an email out yesterday with my wife's help. We put it together, really three concerns. One is that it's much larger than the existing houses in the immediate neighborhood, including ours, 3,500 square feet versus 5,700 square feet, or whatever the proposal is. We're concerned about the damage of the character and the feel of the neighborhood with what we have. I see I have a minute left, so I'll keep rolling here. I see I have a minute left, so I'll keep rolling here. We're also concerned about the setbacks. I had mentioned to my wife Susan a month ago, you know, if everything's according to the Los Gatos requirements of setbacks, just let them build what they want to build. I have no problem at all. But now that we're seeing how it's constraining the sides on these very narrow lots, that is a concern of ours. And then the blocking of the sunlight and the privacy issue is also an additional piece. Something I learned tonight that I was not aware of was the mechanical nearby. I don't know and I don't wish to raise another new issue, but is that mechanical noise-making or humming or something else that's there that's going to be that close to the side fence for us? So our respectful request is that we have the reduced square footage of the house to fit more with the character of the neighborhood, that there's no reduced setbacks to allow the privacy and the sunlight and the, the feel of the neighborhood, and to basically do a mild redesign of the residence to avoid the current high degree of sunlight blockage and privacy incursions. That's pretty much it.
All right, uh, thank you, and don't leave in case there's any questions for you. Any questions for Mr. Eck, yes, Commissioner Birch?
Um, I would just like to know at what point you were, or if you were brought in to look at the, the drawings and the proposed house and any input that you were able to give the owner.
Great, good point. I met the owner for the first time by phone today. The gentleman did come by our house a couple times a few months ago and talked to my spouse, with my wife, but we never saw any drawings. And actually, it was yesterday, after I got back from a business trip, that we looked at the plans online, which was great that you could even see these things online these days. And we looked and we thought, oh, boy, these are not the setbacks that we were expecting. So we had not seen any plans or anything other than what we found last night or yesterday afternoon on the, on the, on the web. And as a result, that's why we sent the email.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a question, but first I want to ask the staff something. We have a wide discrepancy between your measurements and his measurements. So I understand, I mean, you have 4,196 and he has 3,100. So I'm going to ask staff, are you comfortable with your 4,196?
I pulled off the, I pulled the numbers off the approved plans, so if they built, they perhaps built something different. I didn't go out on their property and measure the building. I looked at the plans in the planning file for their particular address. It showed an accessory structure that was approximately 11, it was over 1,100 square feet in the rear yard, and I added that to the house square footage. I wasn't counting the garage.
And are those plans older? I think the resident said he's been there nine years. Were those plans older than nine years?
I don't believe so. Otherwise, they wouldn't probably still be in paper form in a planning file.
Okay, so I guess I would ask you, did you file plans within the last nine years?
No, we bought the house as it is intact, so we had no reason to do that. If, if part of the discrepancy is the back building, it's 450 square feet, there may have been original plans for double that size or whatever, but that's certainly not the case. It's basically a relatively small, think of it as a one and a half car-sized garage that I use as an office back there. And we do paperwork there and such. So in total, and you're welcome to go out and measure, I think the house is 3,100 and the back building is 400, 450 totaling 3,550 is our best estimate.
When you bought the house, were you given a description of the house saying 3,100 square feet?
Correct, yes.
And have you ever had occasion to measure the house?
Yes, we did, yeah. And it, and it bore out, I mean, based on our amateurish measurements, but certainly...
So when you bought the house, the seller was saying it was 3,100 square feet, and then you confirmed that either then or later?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Eckhart. As we look at your home, how many feet back from the street do you just estimate it, it is?
Wow. I would defer to the, to Ms. Avila to, to say, I really don't know.
Okay, well, what, what I'm trying to picture in my mind is on the right side of your home, which would be impacted in some way by this building, what is there, what kind of living do you do on that right side is what I'm trying to figure out?
Um, the right side is our family room and then a, a study, and then another kind of general room where our cat stays and where we have other things going on too. But there are windows towards that place. We live there. That's a pretty active part of our house.
All right, that was my question, thank you.
The other thing that I may mention about the two-story versus one-story was the other thing that perhaps Commissioner O'Donnell, when you were talking about discrepancy in size, is that we are a one-story house, and that does make a difference with having a, a very large two-story house built next door. That, that feels like a, a difference to be mentioned.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Right versus left, a question was asked and you gave an answer, but I want to make sure that I understood correctly. When we're talking right and left, we're talking facing your house from the street, is that right?
Correct.
So the cat, for example, if we're facing the house to the, to the street, would be on the right-hand side of the house. Is that right?
Correct. And so is our living room and TV room and so forth.
Right.
Yes, correct.
I could focus on the cat.
Got it, all right, great.
All right, I don't want to hear the cat complain, so.
All right, thank you. You can have, you can be seated now.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Will there be at some point something about the mechanical in the closet with the noise? Because I'm just, that was new for me tonight. I didn't hear about that before, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe Piazza.
I live at 16521 Inglewood, and I'm here in complete support of the project. I think two key points are, obviously you know Gary Colsette, who's just a great designer and architect. I've had a chance to work with Steve Massey, who's an excellent builder. You can see his two most recent homes on San Benito as well. But one of the things I want to emphasize with this lot, it's an over 20,000 square foot lot, and it's built consistent with your guidelines. And I think the last gentleman said the same thing that I feel as a neighbor. There's a number of two-story homes on this, on this, on this street. One most recently built is a two-story structure three doors down. I actually put an offer on it myself before I bought my home on Inglewood. It's well over 5,000 square feet. My home is listed on the, on the county records as saying 2,800 square feet. My home actually is 4,000 square feet. So I think it's really important is not only look at the square footage of the homes based upon their lot size. That's a key point of differentiation. The applicant is not building a 4,500 square foot home on an 8,000 square foot lot. And most of the homes that I need you to look at as well and to do your due diligence and study, is to look at the other homes on, on Littlefield. I personally have built and sold homes that are well over 5,500 square feet, newer construction Mediterranean homes on Littlefield, right around the corner, adjacent to Inglewood. And there's a number of 4,500 to 4,700 square foot homes on Marchmont as well, newer construction. So, but the most unique thing about Inglewood is, is the larger lot sizes. And there are a number of one-story homes and two-story homes. I would say probably half the homes on the street are between 3,000 and 4,000 square feet. But then you have probably a dozen homes that are about 1,000 square feet to 1,500, completely run down. And this is an example of a 60-year-old home that really should be torn down and turned into something beautiful like Gary Colsette, as well as Steve Massey can build in this neighborhood. And I think it's a neighborhood that's going to be through a transition. It's very difficult because half this neighborhood is in county and half of this neighborhood is in, is in city. And hopefully, the whole street can be annexed to be under the Los Gatos control. But that's a little bit of the hog posh that we're dealing with now specifically with, with Los Gatos. But the key, the key point that I would want to make is this is a 20,000 square foot, very large, very rare yard. And that needs to take into consideration of how big the applicant can build their home.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Piazza.
I was trying to find your home on my map, but I may have misunderstood.
I'm 16521 Inglewood.
16521, okay. And, and you have how many square feet?
About 4,000 square feet.
And you're in the town or the county?
I believe I'm in the county.
Well, you can usually tell with the houses in the county, they're the real big ones. So you think you're in the county?
I think I'm in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Up to three minutes to add any further comments that he would like to make about the application, Mr. Colsette. Is there anything you'd like to add to your previous remarks?
Um, the one thing that I wanted to clarify, Commissioner Badami had, had correctly added up to our, our square footages of the house and the garage, but it makes it sound like a much larger house than any of the other numbers that we're looking at. I want to make it clear that we want to compare apples to apples, and we're comparing house sizes and floor area sizes, which are separate from the garage. And so it's, it, it could be misleading when you're talking about a 5,500 square foot house, but that's the garage in the house versus a 3,000 square foot house next door. So I think that's something that I just wanted to clarify. The, um, the FAR, also the FAR of the house and all its accessory structures are combined. And so that's really important. And what we've done is we've, we've excluded on all these numbers, all the, all the non-habitable garages. So any, any number that we have in these tables, and that Minnesota has also done, are floor area ratio, period. Okay. The, I don't know what Mr. Eckhart is talking about when, when, I don't believe, I mentioned that he had a two-story house, maybe I missed something, but I don't know where, where he came from, and I, I apologize if we represented, represented that as a two-story house. It's got a very steep roof, but it certainly is a one-story house. And when we placed the garage, we actually looked at the garage on both sides. We looked at it on the south side and the north side, and it worked out better in several ways, from grading, from landscaping, to where we oriented our house, to put that garage on the north side. And again, if, if, if it makes a difference to move it a few feet, we'd be, we'd be certainly willing to look at that. It's a single story. There's a, currently a hedge all along that side property line that if you went out there, you maybe have noticed, very tall fence and a very tall hedge that is also giving them some privacy. They probably won't even see this garage from their, from their living rooms. So that was all I had to say.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Colsette. Let's stay right there because I know we'll have some questions. Commissioner O'Donnell.
We've asked, and I think the resident asked, what's, what is in the mechanical closet?
It's a furnace and a water heater.
It's not an air conditioner?
Not an air conditioner, no.
But it's an air, a forced air heater?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Colsette? All right, seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Seack.
It was a delayed question. Mr. Colsette, given the concerns that you've heard from the neighbor, and, and you know our, at least our intended goal is to try and see if the applicant and the neighbors can try and, and figure out a way to, to solve the problem on their own, are there some considerations that come to mind after you had read their concerns with the setbacks and with the privacy issues? You know, one of the suggestions that we heard from Commissioner Birch was perhaps condensing the, the, the room upstairs, I'm sorry, what is that called? The playroom, the playroom? And, and bringing that in to help with the privacy and with, and with the shadow studies. Are there things, other things that came to mind after you read of their concerns?
Um, one of the things that, that when I looked at their privacy concerns, again, we're, all of our windows are facing the rear yard or the front yard. And so we're really trying to use those guidelines that are put by the town to preserve privacy side by side. Um, yeah, anybody could stand up high in a window and look down, sure, we can have that, but that, that goes with the territory. If, if these windows on the sides have to be, we many times have done opaque glass for privacy issues. That's, that's something that we've had conditioned in the past to, to mitigate the, the privacy concerns from second-story windows. So certainly, that's, that's our solution. The, moving the garage away from their side yard, if they feel that that's going to make a difference, we would certainly, we could do it three feet comfortably. It will block the facade a little bit, but it's not, it's not a doom, doomer, okay? The reason that the family room upstairs, the game room, we're calling it, is partly laid out that way is because the walls stacked down below. And it's a pretty good-sized room, so we have some structural considerations to think about. I always try to design things practically. Two-story houses, so we don't create a lot of beams and extra, extra loads, I try to consider where the floors down below are. And so many times, the second story will mimic a lot of what's going on down below. So we could, as, as Vice Chair Birch, Birch has said, we could shrink in that second story a little bit. The reality is to make any real dent in it, you'd probably have to move it eight to 10 feet, which would be, you'd lose, you'd lose this bedrooms and, and a lot of other things in order to make that happen.
It is a large lot. But for that tree, I think you would have had a much easier job. But I guess because of the tree, you've had to deal with your side setbacks that you might not have had to. What the county did in that neighborhood was something Los Gatos would not have done. There are however, houses in that neighborhood that we're responsible for, not, not this group, but the town is, which are big houses. On the other hand, the houses immediately adjacent are not big houses. So I'm troubled by the size of this house, and I'm trying to think out loud with you rather than surprise when we close this. If there was some way, I'm not, I'm not troubled by the square footage so much as I am how it's arranged. And I keep thinking that maybe, and I'm not suggesting we get rid of the tree, but I, was the tree a significant problem for you in, in having to have the side setbacks shrunk? I, I don't know why with a 20,000 square foot lot, you've got to have narrowed setbacks.
It, we did look at several different ways of designing this house, as I always try to do. Several, several of those designs actually put, when we lengthened this house in order to squish it from being so wide, not so wide, but it's 55 feet wide, okay? The house next door is almost 60 feet wide.
It's relative to the width of the lot, I don't care.
It's relative to the width of the lot.
If it were a wider lot, 55 feet, whatever, it wouldn't bother you.
But once we start to narrow the house, then the house gets longer in the other direction. And then in order to get natural light and views and things like that into the middle of the house, we really have to put more windows on the sides. That was not our intention, mostly because of respect out of privacy of our neighbors. We, we looked at a whole courtyard design, one story that took up almost two-thirds of the, of the back of the property behind the oak tree. And again, it took up most of the lot to do that, and it created a lot of interesting courtyards, but these courtyards were focused on the Rays and the, and the Eckharts. And we didn't, we chose not to do that. We chose to put everything, all of our focus into the rear and to the front. So I don't know if you can imagine, if we shrink in this house and we still try to get those rooms, it, it ends up getting longer and narrower, which is more of a difficult situation to design a, a nice house.
Well, your given's are six bedrooms and a large upstairs playroom and a downstairs living room and a downstairs. Did you give any consideration to shrinking the size? Because I, I agree with you, there are only so many variables, and you did explore a lot of them. But apparently, a given is the size of the home.
That, that, well, these people, when they're buying these properties, are looking at FAR number one, and I know it's never a guarantee, I get that, and I've advised them on that. But the FAR is 4,700. Um, they're thinking, hey, this is great, this is a good neighborhood. There's several homes, as, as Mr. Piazza pointed out, in, in the several blocks, are very large comparable homes to this one. So yeah, we're also looking at this price point. We have to have bedrooms that are not 10 by 10s. These have to be reasonable bedrooms and reasonable bathrooms. And so every, all the house, the size of the rooms are proportionate to the rest of the house, and there's, like every other house, has a living room and a family room. And the family room kitchen nook area is not, is smaller than some of my houses I've done in 3,500 square feet.
What's the dimension of the upstairs game, uh, game room?
Um, do you, excuse me for just a moment?
Sure. So your great room, which is downstairs, and that is, is that immediately under your game room or?
Yeah, if you look at... Yeah, if you look at the great room downstairs, which is our combined family living room downstairs, and there's a fireplace, that wall stacks immediately up. So the flue for the fireplace goes up. You go to page A4, and you see the flue in the center. We boxed out the flue for that room, okay?
What I'm trying to figure out is the dimensions of the great room versus the dimensions of the playroom upstairs. Are they about comparable?
The great room is smaller. It's more in the, it's 19 or 20 by 20 outside to outside. So inside is 19 by 19. So it's not a very, it's not a large room by any means. It's a comfortable room, but it's not an obsessive-sized room.
And what is the height of the ceilings on these floors?
The first floor has 10-foot plates. And the second floor has 9-foot plates, and then we've increased the volume up, or 9 feet 4, excuse me. And we've increased the volume into the second floor ceilings when we could.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, Commissioner Talisfor.
Thank you. Well, it seems like we have a house that just isn't fitting. So, and I understand it would, that you might have some complications with taking some of the massing and spreading it out. But had you considered a one and a half story, would that have given you anything? Because we do have the issue with the neighbors, and we do have to take that seriously. I think their concerns are serious. And we didn't hear from the neighbor on the, if I'm facing the house, that's the actual one, the one-story? Wait a minute. Yeah, this one. That's 442. We didn't hear from that neighbor. And yet, the house as it's drawn today, you know, kind of it looms over that backyard as well. And we have to consider that as well. And in the design guidelines, it says when replacement houses are to come in, and you're in a neighborhood of one- and two-story homes, that your design should be sympathetic to the one-story house that might be next adjacent. So how, can you explain that to me, how that might have been ignored?
Could you clarify what you mean by one and a half stories, please?
Well, I don't know. However, I, maybe your house can't be a full two-story house. And the fact that it is has ignored the fact that you have a one-story directly adjacent to it at 16442. And so I'm trying to say that there's some other issues that I think were ignored.
Well, I-
So help me.
I think we didn't ignore anything, but maybe you think we have. The notion of reducing the second story and putting it more on the first floor, that's what you're suggesting? Yes, we did look at that. Again, it goes back to stretching the house lengthwise, which could be even more of an impact when you look at it from the side yards. Again, the more we can narrow up the side profile, you have less impact from the side, for the side neighbors. Okay? If we try to squish it out more, the length of the property, we're going to have a longer house that's visible from these side property lines. If I have a house, okay, let me just, if I, okay, thank you.
Mr. Kohlstadt, if I might follow up on something that Commissioner Seac said and just take it another step for you. What I understand is, and this I've heard from you, that you could put opaque glass on the side, you'd consider moving the garage in three feet, and you'd consider shrinking the second story. So if I take those three comments, along with the fact that there, we would like to see more communication with the neighbor, I am wondering if we shouldn't consider continuing this matter and let you, or the owner, contact the neighbor and see if something can't be worked out that is agreeable to both sides, since you've already acknowledged a willingness to make some adjustments. You know, I personally, it's a beautifully designed home. The lot is wonderful. The oak tree is beautiful. So there's so much going for this project. It seems to me it needs some more tweaking and also some discussion with the neighbors, and then you could bring it back before us. Are you amenable to that?
Yeah, we are. I would hope that we could find some resolve with the neighbors. The danger of doing this, going this route versus you not approving it and we appeal to council, is that we could still work with the neighbors and still not satisfy them, and then still find ourselves in the months and months behind, coming back to you, still not approved, and then we have to go to council. He's adamant about getting something built here, and so it's-
And I can appreciate that.
I would love to find, make it a win-win for everybody.
All right, so-
So on good faith, we will, we would-
So my question then is, how quickly can you get all of this done? And then we would see how quickly come back on the calendar, so you're not into this month after month after month delay.
We normally are faster than what your agenda can handle, so you don't have to worry about that. We jump right on it.
Well, let, I'm sorry, yes.
Get into that sequence. Can we find out what a date, an open date would be? Let's just arbitrarily say in a month. I don't know if that's too long or too short, but you're right, we should check the calendar to see where we are.
Okay. Well, I think there's a possibility the next, a month puts us at March 12th. So that could be continued to that date, should the applicant need more time. Between then, we could always continue it to a future date, where you just get your cover letter, and they're still working through that. It'll put staff at a little bit of a challenge, given our normal deadlines, but I think that we can work towards that.
Could I suggest to the chair that we allow Mr. Kohlstadt to talk to his client offline for a moment? Because it's kind of unfair, they have to send, it's hard to talk to each other the way they are. If we just gave him a couple of minutes, it would help, I think, help the situation. Because I don't think we're trying, we're not trying to crowd him. We're just giving you an opportunity.
And I was just wanting to make sure that the Eckharts are going to be available and the Rays.
Well, if you want to take a couple of minutes and go back and ask, why don't you do that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. I'm not certain, Mr. Paulson, if I do anything but turn off our microphones for two minutes.
That's correct. We're just waiting for him to return to the mic, and then we'll move on from there.
All right, thank you.
Okay. They will, I think that they're going to miss the meeting, but if, we'll have to do all our work way ahead of time anyway for that. And I spoke with the Rays, and they will be around as well. They also mentioned that they don't have any objections to the project as it is, so.
Right. And so, Mr. Kohlstadt, do you feel that you're clear on the directions that we seem to be going in here?
I wouldn't say crystal, but I have a pretty good, I have a pretty good idea what you're heading.
So I mentioned the three issues that I knew that you commented, that you would be amenable to looking at, and we certainly have heard from the Eckharts with their concerns. So I think we have at least given a roadmap here on which way you can lead to the neighbors.
It's helpful. It's very helpful to have more specific things to work on.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And Ms. Talisfor, yes, Commissioner Talisfor.
And then, so you'll take a look at the guideline, in the residential design guideline, that talks about two stories next to one stories? Okay?
We will.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kohlstadt.
Thank you.
So now I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask the commissioners if they would like to make a motion for continuation. Yes?
I'll make a motion that we continue this matter until, I think it's the first, is it the first meeting in?
March 12th.
Okay, until March 12th?
And do I have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I'll second that motion.
All right, and any comments? Yes, Commissioner Erickson.
So it's not completely clear to me. I mean, I'm sympathetic to the motion, but I'm also sympathetic to the owner and the architect. It's not completely clear to me exactly what the concerns are, other than potentially the general sized, well, it's not even clear to me that the size of the square footage of the house, because I heard one commissioner say, "I'm not concerned about the square footage of the house, but I'm concerned about how it's arranged." There were issues about setbooks back, so I'm not, so while I'm, while I, my sense is, the motion might be right. I guess I'm concerned we may not be providing adequate direction to the applicant to be sure that we don't end up at the same place on March 12th that we are tonight.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I may be the commissioner who would be quoted as saying I wasn't that concerned about the square footage, and that would be a misstatement by me. So I don't want to be remembered for that comment. That is one of the things I'm concerned with. I'm simply saying the proper design, which I have to say at the moment, I don't feel is there, could overcome, I think, the square footage issue. I personally think the house is big. On the other hand, you know, I've heard it's 20,000 square foot lot and all that, and I'm sympathetic to that, and the homeowner's got his own desires. But I'm saying, there are only a limited number of multiples here. One thing is you make a smaller home, that takes care of a lot of issues. Now, somebody says, "I don't want to do a smaller home." Then you sit down with your neighbor and figure out some way to make the neighbor happy. And keep in mind, this is not a deal where you come in and tell us the neighbor's happy, and then we just smile and approve it. We've got to be happy too. But I will tell you, it would go a long way if you were happy, your neighbor were happy. But you're right, none of us, all of us haven't gone down the line, but by and large, I just think the house is too big. But I'm prepared to believe that if you were able to do something with that, and you said, "No, I really don't want to reduce the square footage," you might be able to accomplish something, where I say, "Well, it's a big house, but that's okay." So that's all I wanted to say. I'm not sitting here saying I would not approve a house unless it was 4,100 square feet or something. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Bodami.
I'm concerned about the square footage in relation to the homes in the immediate neighborhood. That's what I'm looking at.
All right, anything else?
And I would echo that as well. I looked at the size of the lots, and this is not the largest lot in the neighborhood. This is like the fifth-largest lot, I think. And yet, it's the largest house, and it's having a hard time fitting on the lot. I'm not sure that this is the house for that lot as it stands presently. So that's three of us who are concerned with square footage.
Any further comments? All right, then I'd like to call the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And no nays? The motion to continue passes? Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
There are not any appeal rights. A decision has not been made, but I would note that it was, the item was continued to a date certain, which was March 12th. So there will not be any new noticing going out to the neighborhood for this next hearing.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to any new other business. And, Mr. Paulson, do you have a report from the Director of Community Development?
Just wanted to touch on a couple actions since we last met. DRC hasn't had any items that they've taken final action on. However, the town council met on February 3rd, and they discussed an appeal of your decision approving 134 Loma Alta. That appeal was denied, so the project was approved. And I believe that's all that has been through the commission, that the council's reviewed since we last met.
Thank you. Do any members of the commission have an issue to bring to the attention of the commission? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.